All right, it is 6:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Fairfield County Council meeting. Today's date is July 22nd, 2019. I'll have the approval of the agenda.
It's been moved and properly second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda passed six to zero. I'd like to report that Councilmember Trapp contacted me and stated he was unable to make it tonight. Now down to the invocation will be by Councilmember Bell.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to say thank you for all your blessings. We thank you for this time that we've come together here tonight, citizens of Fairfield County Council. We pray your blessing upon each and every one of us. Father, we pray that you might bless these teams here tonight who've come, that they might be recognized, God, and the coaches and the parents. We also ask your blessing upon these exchange students, God. You've been so good to us and you've been so good to this county, so we thank you. But as we do the work of council, God, may we always remember the least of these that you said in your word. God, we're just mindful of, we're here to serve. So, God, we just pray that you might make us able servants. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Bell. Now down to the approval of amendments. Regular meeting dated July 8th of 2019. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved and properly second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? I'm sorry. No discussion. It's passed six to zero. Approval of the amendments. Now down to public presentations. First, we have the Fairfield County Parks and Recreation. I'd like to ask Mr., come on up and speak on behalf of the rec, please, or Mr. ...
Good evening, Chairman Robinson, members of council, Mr. Taylor, and everyone here tonight. I'm Russell Price. I'm the Director for Fairfield County Parks and Recreation, and we're here to recognize the 2019 12-and-under and 8-and-under South Carolina RBI State Champions. It is an honor to stand in front of you tonight once again. We had the pleasure of recognizing these two teams last year as state champs, and we come back to you tonight as back-to-back state champions. Beside me, I want to introduce my athletic department, Lucas Vance, who is our athletic coordinator, and Larry Perry, who is our athletic specialist. Without these guys, this wouldn't be possible. Trust the process. Our department had a vision of where we wanted to be. Our goal is to provide the best recreation programs as possible and to do it the right way. By doing so comes change. What a scary thought. It starts with a sport from Mr. Taylor and council in allowing us to do our jobs and give us all the tools to let us be the best Parks and Rec department we can be, and for that, I thank you all. I cannot thank my staff enough for buying into our plan and helped selling it to our coaches, parents, and community. Before we bring out the championship teams, we do want to acknowledge our 10 U team. After not winning a game last year in All-Stars, we finished as state runner-ups this year. They had a great tournament, led by head coach Larry Perry, assistant coaches Ro Coleman, McKendrick Thompson, and Marvin Robertson. Excuse me. What was unique about them, none of those coaches had a child on the team. Three of those coaches are former high school baseball coaches. So, we're really excited about them, and if you would, give those 10 U players a hand because they had a great, great tournament. First up for our state championship recognition will be the 2019 SC RBI 12-U champs for the second straight year. But before I introduce the team, I'd like to recognize that this team demonstrated leadership, and it all started with the leader and head coach Chuck Rayly. Coach Chuck is a special kind of leader, and Fairfield County has been fortunate to have him for over 43 years coaching the youth of Fairfield County. Coach Chuck gave us some comments and memories about each player and coach, and this time I'd like to introduce them. We do have some coaches and some players that aren't here tonight on vacation, but we still would like to recognize them. Assistant coach Jared Douglas, he helped teach and develop these players to prepare them for the tournament. Assistant coach Eric White worked hard with the infield and the players' ability to perform in the tournament. These assistant coaches made his job so much easier. These coaches have worked together for years. A lot of these players have been together since team ball, and through all of these years, these players, coaches, and parents have formed a baseball family. None of this would be possible without them. Now introducing your 12-U state champions. Number one, infielder Nigel Woodard. Nigel helped the team with his fielding and his base stealing. Number two, outfielder Robert Thompson. Robert's not with us tonight, but he had helped with his improved batting and his excellent play in centerfield. Number four, outfield pitcher Ty Belton. His pitching was solid and his batting helped the team throughout the tournament. Ty Belton is also a first-year baseball player, so a pretty special accomplishment there. Number six, outfield Markavis Goodwin. Markavis was solid in the field and at the plate the entire tournament. Number seven, infielder pitcher Graham Douglas. Graham's not with us tonight. Pitched extremely well throughout the tournament and was always solid in the field. Number eight, outfielder Kiarsus Simmons. Solid outfielder and a great teammate. Number nine, infield pitcher Drew Spires. Drew did great work behind the plate, and his batting average helped lead the team. Also, I did check his birth certificate, and he was eligible. We got that question a couple of times. Next up, number 10, outfielder Owen Wilson. Owen played well in the outfield and came up with some big hits. Number 11, infield pitcher Owen Martin. Owen came up big in all three phases with his bat, his glove, and his pitching. Number 21, infielder pitcher Charlie Bonds. Charlie played infield and catcher, and he led the team with three out-of-the-park home Number 44, infielder Hank White. Hank was solid up the middle and at the plate and was a great teammate. This is your 12-U 2019 SC RBI State Champions.
If council would, you guys want to get a picture with the eight, is the eight U? Twelve U, okay.
We got one more team if you want.
Get it together last year. However you want to do it, y'all share. Okay.
I'm gonna have to get up. I'll be front.
Alright guys, everybody look right down the center so everybody here taking photos.
Now I'd like to introduce our eight U state champs. I'll start with head coach Trow Hazen. What a pleasure it was to have Trow coach this team. We're so fortunate to have a dedicated coach like him who doesn't even have a child on the team. With Trow, everything came full circle for our program. Trow was a part of the 2010 U Pau Meta League State Champs, and now in 2019, he coached this team to another state championship. Coach Trow provided some comments that I'll share with y'all now as we introduce the rest of the team. Ab was his rock, kept him calm throughout the whole tournament. Also, Ab's his father. He was the head coach of the 2010 Pau Meta U State Championship team. Next is assistant coach Larry Johnson. Larry is a product of our organization, played for us, had no child on the team, but devoted his time to keep the boys picked up, and he was the pep talk king. Now for the players. Number one, the pitcher, Martez Harrison. He's the Energizer Bunny, fast as lightning, always smiling ear to ear. Also, pound-for-pound toughest man in town. Number two, the first baseman, Brody Price. Mr. Sunday, tough as nails, went for nine for nine on championship day, was our leader and our heartbeat. Number three, third baseman, Caden Brown. Caden is not with us tonight. He was a silent assassin. Coach Trow worked hard just to get a smirk out of him after he would get a big hit. Number four, second baseman Elliot Douglas. Elliot's not with us tonight as well. Mr. Consistent in the field and at the plate, Coach Trow always knew Elliot would make the play. Number five, catcher Martez Turner. Martez played catcher for the first time at the tournament, and by the end of the tournament, he was one of the best catchers there. Great teammate. Number six, outfielder Mason Patrick. Mason was always game-ready and full of energy. Coach Trow had to beg him to sit down and rest in between games. Number seven, outfielder Caleb Sasser. Caleb was always enthusiastic, energetic, and a great teammate. Number eight, the shortstop Mason Jackson Nellums. Mason was always happy and had a knack of making things go his way. He also has a little bit of swag, too. Number nine, outfielder Bruno Bolware. Big-hit Bruno. Biggest smile on his face when he was coming around the bases after having the game-winning walk-off hit in the semifinals against Aiken. Number 10, outfielder Parker Knight. Parker was always calm and cool and always very attentive. Number 13, catcher Zion Woodard. Zion was always wanting to hit, and every inning, he'd have his batting equipment ready to go. Zion also is only a six-year-old on the team. I'd like to introduce to you the 2019 8-and-under SC RBI State Champions. Here, get them to stand behind them real quick, and I'm gonna finish y'all. Stand behind them.
Y'all stay right where you are for just one second.
Four years, I'll be eight years old.
Twelve U's, y'all come in here behind. Come in, behind the eight U. Come on, y'all. All twelve U. I'm gonna get a group picture, everybody.
Cause I'm on my back.
Yeah, Coach, make sure you got a shoulder there on those guys. You're fine. Can you two dance? Russell, y'all want to get up there and get a picture with him?
They're all names.
You have to stay on the shoulders. Alright guys, everybody look.
Happy days.
There you go. Everybody go champs!
Champs!
Mr. Price, I also understand that...
In closing, I want to thank you all again for allowing us to come recognize our staff, coaches, players, and families. I've learned a lot through this process. Winning these championships are great, but I learned so much more during our time together. We can learn a lot from the three teams we took to Aiken. We live in such a crazy world that judges and divides. That's true. But I saw something different on this journey. Doesn't matter about the color of your skin. Doesn't matter about your size, big, tall, short, skinny. Doesn't matter about the money, whether you have it or you don't. Doesn't matter which school you attend. We got players from Fairfield Central, Richard Wynn, Middleland Stent, and homeschool. Doesn't matter where you live, whether it's Ridgeway, Jinksville, or off Smalls Down Road. Experience level doesn't matter. We've got kids that play travel ball. We've got first-year players. And then what mattered was these coaches, players, parents, and community. Came together to be a family. And that's what we're about, family. Trust the process.
I just got one question. I understand you guys attended the Firefly game, and I was unable to attend that Sunday. You tell me a little about that.
Yes, we took all three teams to the Fireflies game a couple Sundays ago, and it was a great opportunity. The kids were happy to have their names called out and run on the field. Also, they came up to us afterwards or during the game. We carried over 130 people to the Fireflies game. Just some simple old folks from Fairfield County, and it was an awesome experience. Thank y'all for enabling us to do it.
Thank you. Council's got any comments, questions? Mr. Bell?
One of the things I was just asking Mr. Taylor a few minutes ago is whether we could go ahead and make sure we recognize them on our, on the county webpage, Facebook or something, so we can do this. I walked into the room where they were. This is a big deal. It's a big deal for this county, and I want to thank all the coaches. Russell, thank you for all your hard work. But again, for this county, this is a big deal, and we need to celebrate this kind of thing. Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, I'd like to say also to the coaches, congratulations to the team, congratulations. Kids, I want to say one thing to you. Pay attention to your coaches, pay attention to your parents, listen to what they are telling you as you're trying, as you are playing this game. This is a great game. I used to play this game, and I love it. And I'm so proud of you guys, and as Councilmember Bell said, this is a big deal. You guys are our future. Stick with what you're doing, stick with what you're good at, because one day, you may not know, but one day, you might be that million-dollar player that everybody's talking about. Love you guys, you keep it up. And like I said, just listen to your coaches. They love you. And when they're trying to give you constructive criticism, it is for your betterment. So, young men, you keep up the good work. We are proud of you.
Mr. Douglas?
Ditto. Congratulations.
And I too want to say congratulations and kind of piggyback on what Mr. Price is saying to all the coaches, to the team, to the players. I thank God for you, but what you've done is shown the example of what building relationships is all about. You've taken away all of the negativity, and you brought love together, you brought compassion together, and you show what working together can really do, and I thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Congratulations to each and every one of you.
Thank you. Mr. Price, you said trust the process. Well, evidently, this is two years in a row, so I guess the process is working, so.
Thank you all again.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for all your work. Tell them how to do it, Chuck. We'll just give it a few minutes for those that's leaving to go ahead and leave if y'all All right, we'll go ahead and go on down to item B. We have Miss Lions Club Student Exchange. I think it's Miss Gracie A. McCray from British Columbia. Is that correct? And we also have, from Canada, Miss Ida Marie Sturtzel.
Yeah.
Is that correct? From Soro, Denmark. All right, at first, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Miss Linda Hasler, will she come up and do a presentation for us?
Winsboro has a Lions Club here. Fairfield County has it. We are proud to be Lions. Lions is an international association. It is all over this world. You two in this room, council people and audience, can be Lions and do the same thing and have the same experiences, and your children, grandchildren can have experiences. Y'all think about the Lions, that all we do is do the vision testing in the school, go out and help with eyeglasses and get them to the doctors and things like that. Well, it's much more, it's bringing this world together. And every year, during the summertime, Lions and others throughout the world exchange high schoolers. We're talking about kids that are sometimes only 14, coming internationally across the water to us, and us sending our children, grandchildren overseas to them to learn more about this world. We all come together for the one purpose of vision, diabetes, which causes problems, and things that we can do to bring more world peace together. This year, South Carolina is proud to have 12 students with us. Of the 12 students, Fairfield usually gets a good many, but due to other circumstances, we only received two this year. We're hoping others will step forward from this room, this council, and say, "I too want to host some kids." These kids are wonderful. They're here for four weeks. All the houses have is two weeks with them to help them and show them a little bit about Winsboro, Fairfield County. Then we take them, you know, wherever you want to, in Columbia and around. Today, the girls got together with the other exchange students in Aiken, and we had a short swim pool party with them. We will be traveling after two weeks here with the kids. I won't, I mean, the other parents won't, but I will go part of the time, and they will travel the state of South Carolina, starting in the upstate and going from Joe Cassie all the way through Mullins to Myrtle Beach, all the way down Charleston Hilton Head, back to the middle part of the state, seeing everything within this state. They'll take two weeks. We'll be pulling trailers with their gear. They'll take their own suitcases. They carry their own duffel bags with their linens and their pillows and all that, so they will be seeing all of South Carolina before they come back to Fairfield, and we prepare them for that flight home. These are very brave students to be able to come across the ocean, get through... students to be able to come across the ocean, get through customs, as some of them may have had a little bit of problem and missed some flights, but they still made it anyway. But I am pleased to host two at my home. I'm gonna let them take it from there.
Hello, I'm Gracie McCray, and I am from Canada, and I made a little presentation about my country. So, I am from Canada, and it's quite a big country, so I'm on the very west coast on Vancouver Island. I live in a small town called Courtney, and together it's, Courtney is the city, then we have Comox, which is the town, and then Cumberland is our village, and together we're the Comox Valley. And also, a little fun fact, Vancouver Island gets the most rain out of all North America, so I'm not used to the heat here, definitely. In fact, it was almost snowing when I was leaving home to come here. So, Comox Valley is great for outdoor people. We have, we have beaches, but they're nothing compared to the ones here. Very rocky. The chances of going into the ocean to swim is very, not good. And then we have the rivers, like Nimp Falls is a great swimming hole. And then we also have Mount Washington, and that's probably one of our most popular attractions for skiing and snowboarding. And we have Olympic athletes come here and train. Then also, we have lots of nature parks and trails to go through. So, that's my city, but then we have a bit bigger picture, and that's British Columbia. That's the province that I'm from. And Tofino is a popular spot to go for surfing, storm watching, nature again. And then there's the legislature, and that's kind of our government building, and that's in Victoria, and that's our capital. And then we have Vancouver. That's probably our very common city you've probably heard of. It's the biggest city in Canada. And then, if you like wine, I can't say that I've tasted wine before, but we are known for vineyards. So, we have lots of vineyards, and that's in the Okanagan, and that's the middle southern part of British Columbia. So, then there's a stereotype of a Canadian, and some of these are not true. Some people think we have pet polar bears. We do not. That's a danger, that's a dangerous choice. I would not recommend that. Also, some people think we drink maple syrup. We don't. We love it. We put it on lots of things, but we don't drink it. And then we don't live in igloos. But we do say sorry all the time. I say sorry for things I don't even do. And I'm gonna apologize for going to be saying sorry for so many times. And then it's also very cold, so it's always winter. So, that's another thing that's part of Canada. And then we have some vocabulary. I know that I also speak English, but there's some words that I don't say that you guys probably say, such as a beanie. For a tuke, I say that. I've never said beanie. Also, the big one I learned is freezies. You guys call them popsicles or outer pops. When I heard that, I was very confused. I was like, "That's not a popsicle?" Like, nope. And also pop, I don't say soda. And then we have some native animals. We have the moose, the Canadian goose, deer, cougars, bears. Our beaver is our national animal, and some salmon. And actually, deer is probably the most dangerous animal that we have, just because they're very dumb when it comes to highways. And if you think of the statistics, the deer are probably the most dangerous animals we have. Then we have some Canadian desserts. The Nanaimo bar is probably one of my favorites. It's actually made on the island, and it's really yummy. And then we have butter tarts, which is like a tart. And I think you guys call them donut holes here, but back home, I call them tin bits. And then beaver tail is like a flattened donut, and that has toppings, and it's really sweet, and it's yummy. And then we have some fun facts. Also, so we have two national languages, French and English. I speak both. English is my first language, but I also have French. Our capital is Ottawa, and that's in Ontario, and that's more of the eastern side. And then our population is 37 million. It's a bit smaller than America's population, I think. I think it's about 300 million or something around here, so it's a bit different. And then Canada Day is July 1st, and that's very similar to July 4th for America. And then we became a country in 1867. That makes Canada 150 years, 52 years old. And then lacrosse is our national sport, and that's close to street hockey. It's a bit different. And then the beaver again is our national animal, and my favorite is hooten, and that's our national food, and it's very delicious, and I recommend having it. So, I think that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say to you, welcome to Fairfield County. Welcome to America. And we have some things in common. You're from the west coast in Canada. I'm from the west side of Fairfield County. We have another thing in common. You have deer. They're dangerous. We have plenty of them. You're welcome to take your family back home with you if you would like to. But I appreciate your presentation. You just involved us so much with where you're from and all that's going on with you, and I love you to mean your, so enjoy your visit here and come again.
Thank you.
One more question.
One more question.
What's your favorite food here so far?
Oh, that's hard. I tried fried chicken for the first time. That was good. That was delicious. Yeah. But I will say, when I come home, I'm definitely gonna recommend my family to come here for vacation. It's very nice.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you.
Now we'll have Miss Ida Marie Sturtzel.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, hi, guys. My name is Ida Marie Sturtzel, and I'm from Denmark. I'm 17 years old, and I'm gonna tell you a little about my home country. The picture you see here is from Copenhagen, our capital, and this is like my favorite spot in Copenhagen. It's a very huge tourist attraction. It's called Nye Havn. And in the corner, you see our flag. So, I have two maps here. At the right, you see a map of Europe, and I drew a little red circle, and that's where Denmark is. So, just to kind of show you how small Denmark is, especially compared to other countries in Europe and America as well. And on the right, the left side, you see a map of Denmark, and that little red cross is where I live in Denmark, in a very small town called Soro. Yeah, and that's about a 15 minute, oh, 50, sorry, minutes from Copenhagen. So, it's not that far. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the main languages in Denmark is Danish, obviously, and our second language is English. We learned, have learned English from third grade in school, and then in sixth grade, we get to choose either to learn how to speak German or French, and I choose German. And that's very common in Denmark. And the population in Denmark is 5.8 million people. So, yeah, by that you can tell it's definitely way smaller than America. I think that's actually 5.8 million is like the population of South America, oh, sorry, South Carolina itself. So, yeah. Copenhagen is our capital, as, and as you can tell by the background picture, we have a lot of bicycles there. This is like a regular picture from Copenhagen, and if you ever go there, I think you'll get surprised by all the bicycles everywhere. And that is one of our main transport forms. And Denmark is a really flat country. We don't have a single mountain and barely any hills. So, every time I go traveling, I'm always amazed by mountains, because I'm not used to that at all. We have a monarchy with a queen in Denmark, and the weather is way different than here. I was so shocked when I got here because of the heat. I'm not used to that at all, because we have snow usually during February and March, and then I'd say it's pretty sunny in summer. But then I got here. So, at home, right now, it's probably raining, I think. So, it's nothing like this heat. But, but you should definitely come to Denmark during summer if you choose to go there, because it's pretty nice during summer. And just a little fun fact, last year, 2018, we actually got the prize for the happiest country in the world. I don't know if you knew that, but I don't know if it's true. I think this year it was Finland who got it, but that's pretty funny. And yeah, now I want to tell you a little about the school system in Denmark. We start by having 10 years in a regular ground school, and after that, you have like, kind of like a few different options. And this is like what makes, makes it kind of fascinating, I think, because boarding schools are very common in Denmark. We have about 250 all around Denmark, which is a lot for that small country. And I went to a boarding school, that little picture in the corner. I don't know if you can see it, but that's my boarding school. I just finished that like a month ago, I think. And it's a really great opportunity to try to live in another town and meet people from all over Denmark and try to experience school like in a very different way. So, I was very grateful for that. And then we have kind of a high school. It's a three-years education from 11th to 13th grade, and I'm gonna go there like after summer. And that background picture is the school I'm gonna go to. It's my high school, you could say. And then after this sort of high school, it's very common to go directly to university. But I know a lot of people who've just chosen to take one or two years off to go travel and, or just go like directly to work. So, we have some different options there. And yeah, the Danish food is way different than the American food. I can already tell. This is four of our most common meals in Denmark. We have up in the left corner, something called stekflesk med parsethels, which is kind of a meat or like a steak you eat with potato, we eat potatoes all the time, like every meal almost. And then we have this gravy with some parsley and stuff, and it's very common in Denmark. Everybody loves it. And then we have, down in the left corner, we have something called smørbrøl, which is what we eat for lunch every day. Not that fancy one, though, but we really love this bread, white bread, you know, the dark bread you cut. And we like to top it with a lot of different layers, for instance, potatoes and onions and lettuce and all that stuff. So, yeah, that's pretty common. And so, I guess you could say it's kind of like half a sandwich, because we don't put one more piece of bread on top of it. We just use a plain piece of bread and then with a lot of toppings. And then we have in the right corner, up in the right corner, we have a fish fillet, which is also very common. Denmark consists of, I think, just about 200 small islands. So, we eat fish a lot because we have a lot of, we have a lot of coastline. Yeah, sorry. And yeah, so fish fillet is also like one of the main meals in Denmark. And then down in the right corner, you see probably the most famous, I should say, dessert in Denmark. And it's also, the name of this dessert is also what we kind of get foreigners to pronounce, because that's probably the hardest word or title of something in Denmark. And it's pronounced as rødgrød med fløde. So, y'all can try that one time. But it's basically just a mixture, kind of a thick soup-ish thing with strawberries and milk in it, and it's really good. And I don't think I would make a presentation about Denmark without mentioning my favorite spot in Denmark, and just also just to tell a little about the nature, because like I said, we have a lot of different islands in Denmark. And Banholm, which is what I'm gonna talk about now, is probably the biggest vacation island in Denmark. And like many tourists like to go there and check that out. And that might be because Banholm is actually the only place in Denmark with rocks. Yeah, we ain't got mountains or hills or rocks or anything, but Banholm has like some rocks and stuff, and very, very beautiful beaches as well. And so, that is my favorite spot in Denmark. I'd say it's kind of like my second home, because my grandfather has a house over there, so I go there like once a year. And yeah, that was my presentation about Denmark. I'm glad to be here.
Counsel, have any questions?
Okay, just want to say, of course, welcome to Fairfield County. Welcome to America. Enjoy the presentation, and just hope you enjoy your visit here, and definitely get a chance to come back. I don't think I get a chance to come to Denmark, but it's okay. You can come back anytime. But thank you so much. Appreciate it. Enjoy yourself.
I want to say thank you, too. Both of your presentations were just really good, and I'll tell you what, it really makes you want to visit the countries, and I tell you, your mannerism and all that stuff were just really, really good. And we just thank you all for having done this, and then to tell us a lot about your country. That was really unique.
What's your favorite food?
From America?
From here.
Like, everything I've eaten so far is something different. So...
Krispy Kreme.
Krispy Kreme, yeah. Actually, actually, I had my first real donut here like yesterday, I think, or two days ago, and it was delicious. I've never tried anything better.
Well, let me tell you, I'm from America, and Krispy Kreme is my favorite.
It was really, also mac and cheese. I like, I really like that.
Oh, yes. You're getting to live at home now. Yes, making yourself at home.
Picture with them. Yes, sir, we do need to get a picture. Thank you.
And also want to say to the Hasleys, thank you so much for what you're doing, for opening your heart and your home after, you know, always. This is just an awesome thing for Fairfield County. Thank you.
Now down to item C, a proclamation rezoning August 18th through 24th, 2019 in South Carolina Aviation Week. We're gonna ask Ms. Denise Bryan to come forward, please.
Good evening, Counsel. Mr. Taylor? We're gonna make this really quick, because we've already talked about it one time, but we're just gonna touch base again, make, make sure the council knows and the administration knows that they're invited out for these two events. We're not gonna invite the public because we don't have a large facility, and we're gonna have a large crowd for media and participation already. But I do want the public to know about the events. So, we will start with our website from the South Carolina Aviation Association. You'll see that it's up on the screen, and I'd like everybody to notice that on the main screen for Aviation Week is Fairfield County Airport. When anybody goes to this website and pulls up Aviation Week for the state of South Carolina, they see Fairfield County Airport. Okay, if you scroll down a little bit, Jason, you'll see the, the council has a copy of Aviation Week schedule so far. Oh, it doesn't look the same. I'm sorry, Jason. So, you'll see on Monday, the 19th, our first event is the two high school winning participants that are gonna get a free 30-minute or 40, 30 to 45-minute ride in an airplane exploratory flight. These juniors from high school from last year will be rising seniors this year, and we already know the names of the winners, but we're not gonna give those out yet because they haven't been published. they haven't been published. But we do have a young man from Fairfield Central High School, and I don't know if it's a young lady or a man from Rich, Richard Wynn yet, but we will have two rising seniors on Monday get these rides at 9:00 a.m. And you're welcome to come out and see the kids get these rides. And then also, on Saturday, the 24th, we're gonna have a big event with the Boy Scouts of America. I've been wanting to do something with this group ever since I came out to the airport. And I think that this is gonna be an ideal situation. If you're familiar with the Boy Scouts of America, they have a badge system. And you'll see, the piece of paper that I gave you is the aviation badge requirements for the Boy Scouts of America's badge. And if you look at the paper, you'll notice there's a lot of requirements to get this badge. We have, we're gonna have five flight instructors, three S and a 172s, and myself, and then Brian Steed, the owner of S and S Aviation. We're all gonna be out there on the 24th, on Saturday, from 9:00, excuse me, 8:00 a.m. until about 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon, getting 20 Boy Scouts their aviation badge. All of the kids, all 20, will get a 30-minute, hands-on flight in a 172. And they have to pay $75 for the whole badge, and that's it. So, that's what we're doing for Aviation Week in the state of South Carolina. And Ms. Patty was kind enough to do our proclamation for the county. So, we have a proclamation for the state from the Governor, and also, the one from Ms. Patty.
Counsel, I do have that proclamation. Instead of boring you guys, reading you all of it, I'm just gonna kind of paraphrase, if I may. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Fairfield County Council, do hereby proclaim August 18th through 24th, 2019, as South Carolina Aviation Week. We hereby encourage all citizens to recognize general aviation for its significance, contributions to our quality of life, and economic growth and stability.
Denise, you know that all of these requirements for the Scouts are taught in ground school?
Yes.
Just about everything on the hill the Scouts had to learn?
Yeah.
We taught it in ground school at my house.
Yeah, it gives them a great advancement into the topics in aviation. And if they're interested, there's, if you notice in number five, the section five, I'm actually gonna do that instruction. They get to pick any career in aviation, if they're interested, to sit down with a counselor and talk to them about what it's required for them to do or meet to get, you know, started in those careers. So, it's a lot of good information for these boys. And I'm surprised that nobody's asked us about the girls groups yet, because Boy Scouts of America, everybody knows, now has girls that participate. The only reason we haven't done any girls is because none of them signed up. But next year, I hope to do the same presentation during Aviation Week. And it was amazing to me that 20 people signed up for this class in less than a week. So, it's very popular. Next year, I'm sure it'll be even more popular, and hopefully, we can get some young ladies participate.
Counsel, have any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was a pretty lengthy public presentation, but it was worth it, I say. Now, down to our first public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on personnel changes.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, Fairfield County, District 1. I thought Chairman Robinson's comment about the process is obviously working, was so insightful. It's insightful about life in general. And when the process works, you have success. And we've seen that with these baseball teams, and it's measured, not just in championships, but also the smiles on the kids' faces, the participation rate. Great, the process is measured. And I don't know what we're going, what the personnel changes are going to encompass. And I've had discussions with Jason's before, and I know he's very HR-oriented in ensuring that his organization is geared towards a productive and happy workforce. But, we won't finally know how the process worked until we get a validation. And that validation will take on many levels. But one I'd like to speak towards tonight is the level of, how do the employees feel about their jobs? What input do they have? And my recommendation would be, actually, whether we made these personnel changes or not, is to ensure that we're on the right track with our county associates, is that we conduct an annual, or even biannual, employee survey. And during that survey, we can find out their thoughts, their input, what we can do to improve, what we're doing well, and what we can add to the mix. And also, we can get their suggestions on how we should operate. What, they have more insight than we do. I'm sure you've heard about the book, and it's 10, 20 years old now, where Toyota did surveys their employees all the time, and it's about 10 years ago, they reached the millionth idea that they captured from their employee. So, it's not just about what we can do to make employees' lives better, what we can do to make the employees' lives more productive, but what we can do to ensure that we have less turnover, more trained associates, more teamwork, more role work, and just happier and more productive associates together. So, my suggestion is, let's validate the process and see how we're doing in managing our employees with an annual or biannual employee survey that gives them input, and make it anonymous, that gives them honest and candid input on what we can do to improve their lives and all of our lives out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
Thank you. That concludes Segment 1.
All right. There are no public hearings. Now, down to Item 8, ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We have Item A. First reading by title only. Ms. Davis?
An ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, Number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from R2 Inclusive Residential District to B2 General Business District of 1.35 acres owned by Surrender Singh, applicant, tax map number Property is located at Kincaid Bridge Road, Winsbar, South Carolina, 29180.
Do I have a motion? It's been moved improperly second. There is no discussion, being that this is first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? It's approved 6 to 0. Ordinance Number 729. On down to Board and Commission Minutes, each council member should receive as information. Next is Board and Commission Appointments. We have two from the Library Commission. First is the reappointment of Ms. Jean McCray, District 5. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved improperly second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? It's approved 6 to 0 to reappoint Ms. Jean McCrory. Now, down to Item B, Mr. Robert Drake, reappointment of District 7. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved improperly second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? It's approved 6 to 0 to reappoint Mr. Robert Drake. No old business, no new business. Now, down to our county administrators' report. Ms. Taylor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I have is our Workforce Investment Opportunity Act. That particular program, it's a grant program, very valuable program that we use state money to help people in our county get jobs and get trained, so they can get productive jobs. We do have Ms. Diana Robinson here tonight to give counsel an overview of that particular program. She manages it for us, and to answer any questions Counsel may have. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you to the county council, Administration, and for public, for this opportunity to talk to you about the Fairfield County WIWA program. So, the Fairfield, what is WIWA? The WIWA is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. It's a federal program administered throughout South Carolina by the Workforce Division of Department of Commerce. WIWA supersedes the Work Investment Act of 1988, and WIWA has a state and local board appointed by the Governor that is comprised of business owners, state government officials, educators, and private citizens with a guided policy for all WIWA-funded programs. WIWA programs help businesses meet their needs for skilled workers and provide individuals with access to training that helps them prepare for work. You may have known, the WIWA used to be known as WIA beforehand, it used to be JTPA, SEDA. It's been in existence since the 1960s, so we know that this program actually works. The, oh, where did it go? The purpose is, of the WIWA is to better align the workforce system with education and economic development in an effort to create a collective, a collective response to economic and labor market challenges on a national, state, and local levels. We have six training program clusters, and this is something that the Board came back and actually added construction as one of the critical needs for skilled labor. So, we have training and logistics, we have advanced manufacturing, we have construction, healthcare, information technology, and business administration. WIWA services, we, we work with out-of-school youth, which is high school graduates in GED or those in adult ed, adults and dislocated workers. Now, dislocated workers are individuals like, for example, the ones for VC summer. What we offer is our network of service providers, is made up of local educators, businesses, and other interest organizations, and together, they provide resources such as career planning, paid work experience, internships, under-job training, transitional jobs, tutoring, financial literacy education, youth mentoring, occupational skills training, expungement, alternative secondary school skills, supportive services, and our supportive services include tuition, transportation, uniforms, tools, books, and et cetera. Our current youth enrollment in Fairfield, we have 64. Out of those 64, 43 of them are in training, meaning they are attending post-secondary school, and 21 of them are completing the work experience throughout Fairfield County. We have some with S and S Aviation, some in with economic development, the Detention Center, Parks and Recreation, CVS Pharmacy, and other providers that we all collaborated to provide those, an opportunity for youth that recently graduated high school to complete a paid 10-week work experience provided, funded by the WIWA. And upon completion of their 10-week work experience, they receive an incentive for completing the work experience. And the way this is broken down with our youth and training, what we have, Midland's Tech is our largest cluster of people that are enrolled in the program. We currently have four in the CNA. We have one as a database analyst, nine EMT, two LPN programs, five in the patient care tech, one sonography, seven in welding. We have TDI, which is for people who wanna go to the truck driving industry, we have three in there. NDE is a recent provider that we had, that just came in last year, and they're doing non-destructive technicians. Now, these are the ones that do, you know, they evaluate the sound and structure of the building to make sure that it's structurally sound for any building or any reconstruction. We have MedCert, it's an online provider. This online provider also provides our students laptops to be able to complete their training. And we have one individual that's completing medication care coordinator. We have a few that are going to USC Lancaster and Columbia. We have two that are going for the criminal justice degree. We have one that's an emergency medical tech. We have Piedmont Tech in Newberry, one is doing the LPN program there in welding. Sage is another provider for trucking, Training Concepts does online and also in-house training. We have one that's doing the IT support. And then, Average Drive in School is another service we provide our youth, because a lot of times, they don't know how to drive, they need a driver's license, in order, once we help them get in their driver's license, then they can go ahead and be able to go to school. So, we provide those services for them. Our active, adult, and dislocated work enrollment, we currently have 62. Out of those 62, 45 are in training and 38 are employed. The way it's broken down, of course, Midland's Technical Colleges are largest enrollment. We have business administration, marketing, CNC operator machinist, HVAC, LPN, CNA, emergency tech, pharmacy care technicians, and civil engineering. We have those going to CDI for CDL, another person for NDE, MedCert's online, New Horizon is another provider that we have for, that individuals doing A-plus certification. Then, we have Pramela School of Development for another individual doing front-office administration. Then, Training Concepts has, and then Sage has different enrollments in there.
Ms. Robinson, can I ask a question right quick?
Yes, sir.
The slide you was just on, your office helps get these adults in these locations?
Yes, sir, and I'll go over that with you in a minute. The eligibility process is basically, we have orientation every Friday at our office, which is at the JB Floyd Building. It's at 10:00 a.m. We go over all the eligibility process, we talk about the training programs, and individuals come back, we set an appointment for their enrollment and eligibility. And part of that enrollment eligibility is, we have all of them complete a career assessment, because a lot of times, they may think that that's the career of chose their path, but in the career assessment, we may show them that there's different avenues and different types of careers that they may be best suited for. And so, we align them with that, and we show them what the labor market is and things of that nature that they would need to know in their job for like, truck driving, you know, how much money they would make, and how many jobs they would have available to obtain a job in that field.
And that guiding them into maybe a different career, whatever, how do you, how do you kind of come to that conclusion?
Well, I can, I can give you an example. I had a youth that came through, and he literally wanted just to be a cook. That's all he wanted to do. He didn't want nothing else but be a cook. And so, you know, I just started engaging him in a conversation, and I asked him, I said, "But what do you do when you get home?" "Oh, I love playing on the computer, and I love doing..." And I said, "Well, what do you think about going to school, you know, obtaining, you know, some type of certification or degree or something in the IT field?" He's like, "I think I can do that." And he actually did, and he's now going for his A-plus certification and, and stuff. So, you know, if he wants to be a cook part-time, that's fine. But, you know, our primary goal is to try to put you in something where we know that it's going to, you know, overall, long-term employment. And so, that's, that's how we do it. We don't necessarily tell you that's what the path you have to take, because at the end of the day, it's the individual's choice. But we kind of give them a, a big picture of, these are the different careers that, based on your profile, based on your personality and your interests, that you'll best be suited for.
That's awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a great thing. It takes the discernment to be able to maneuver someone into where maybe they can prosper. That's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am. And the way the process works is, I'll go with Midland's Tech. What we do is, we do the enrollment, we send the paperwork to the school. And this is just an example of what we do. This is a course, a course that's gonna start on the 5th in Fairfield. The course amount, which is $1,000, we send all that information over with the person's information, along with the second form, which is a budget. It's our scholarship budget. We send that over to the school and say, "This is what we'll pay for that individual to go." It's signed off by me, and it's signed off by the school. Then, what I do after they send that, and we've confirmed that the person has started, I send them a voucher. A voucher is the payment process, or how we pay. And it, we have, since we have three clusters, youth, dislocated workers, and adults, I have to identify which funding stream this money would come out of. So, all that is listed on that voucher, I send that over to the school. They return it to me with an invoice, and I send it up to Finance with that, and this form right here, to say, "This is what the payment needs to go," and the payment is remitted to the provider. And, I mean, our bottom line is, you know, WIWA's success is driven by the success of our participants. I want to share some of the, the success stories that we have. These are Hunter and Shelby and Raven, which is not pictured on here. These are our first that actually completed the EMT program, and we were able to partner with Fairfield County EMS to have them do internships with the county. And then, upon earning their accreditation, they can be hired on as county employees. Our next participant is Unique Wilson. She completed her medical office specialist training, but found that it was difficult for her just to find a job without having a CNA accreditation. So, we approved a second funding for her, and she's now going for CNA, and she'll have that, and she'll be able to get hired on with the employer that's just waiting for her to complete her CNA accreditation. And we also pay to, for them to take that exam as well. The next person is Xavier Anthony. He was the individual I was talking to. He was the individual I was talking to you about. When he came in, he just told me he just wanted to be like SpongeBob, the fry cook, literally. And so, I had to kind of talk to him about it, and you know, he's one of those IT junkies and loves, you know, playing video games and all these kind of things. And we just, you know, we did a career assessment and found that he would be best suited for a database analyst, and he's completed school, and he's going in to take his exam. And we have three locations. Fairfield is one. It's at the JB Floyd Fielding. Richland, we have a location, which is on Taylor Street. And then, Lexington, we also have an office where they also serve, you know, any locations, any WA participants that are interested in joining the program. And then, this is my staff right here, pictured from left to right, is Kayla Young, LaPree Taylor, and Joseph Brown. Those are, that's my team. That's my rock, and they help me run this program very smoothly. Any questions?
I want to say thank you so much for being so well organized and being able to show us exactly the flow of process.
Yes, ma'am.
And go back to that word, "The process works."
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a great thing when you can actually see it and you have people that you're familiar with in the area. That's a great thing. So, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
One of the things, Mr. Taylor, one of the things I thought we had talked about is when we have people make presentation, they have a little leaflet, something. I thought we had approved that some time ago so we can pass out to the constituents and some just gets some made. So, we need to go back to try to doing that because I'm familiar with her programs. Ms. Robinson, she came to Ridgeway to present to the constituents in Ridgeway. So, I thought that was a good thing. But, we need more of this kind of information to get out to the public. Okay? I think we might have about 40 or 50 people in this room, but we need this kind of information to get out to the public. And again, I'd like for us to make, to go back and let's make sure as they make their presentation is to publish a little leaflet or a pamphlet so we can give to us, so we can have them reproduce, so we can give out to our constituents.
I apologize. We'll get that done next time because that is a very good idea.
Does council have any further questions?
Ms. Robinson, you said in your presentation that you work real closely with Midland Tech, right? With the tuition and everything like that, that a lot of times, you know, you can work with the high school graduates and things?
Yes, sir.
And you have a system where you can always keep records of how the money is being spent, correct?
Yes, sir. We have, since it's a grant, and regardless of whether it was a grant or not, we have to have accountability for where all the money's going and how it's being spent. So, I'm thankful, you know, because the way it's, you know, it's managed through the county, I can pull accumulation transaction reports and things of that nature. I can go to finance and obtain any records that I need to show, you know, the available funds if we have because certain times we may exceed funds on one specific, like use, and we may have to move funds around. But, in any given time, you know, if anybody needs numbers and see, you know, percentages and how much we've spent, all that's provided by our finance department.
But, you have all the criterias of what?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean, you know, because with, if we were going to, you know, the continuing education program, we fund completely. We fund 100%. We fund, you know, we pay for their tuition. We pay for the supportive services. We pay for books, tuition, mileage, childcare, things of this nature. We pay for all that. For academic, it is the same structure that we, that the Midland's Tech uses is, they have to apply for FAFSA, any Pell or any type of hope grants that they have. Once all those funding has come through and there's any balance that the student owes, then we come in and we sponsor them. We pay for that tuition, and we pay for books, uniforms, mileage, and things of that nature.
Thank you. Okay, and then, say, students that are able to afford, would they be able to themselves, would they be able to go through your program? Is there a way they just need?
Well, I mean, anyone can enroll. We can have a million enroll in the program only, you know, because we look at, you know, what criteria is, if they have been unemployed for a long time, if they don't have any, if they've never worked, or they may be basic skills deficient because we also provide them win assessments and workies assessments, which the high school does, but we also, it's a requirement. We provide sled backgrounds and things like that that we have to do to try to assist individuals because some may need an expungement, and they can't find a job until that expungement is completed. We work with the county, with Mr. Randy Newman, and seeing what we can do, and we pay for all of that. All that is funded through the WIWA. We do counseling, and we also partner with other agencies like the Vocational Rehab with Mr. Tim Robbins. We work with him, Carolina Community Actions. We work with Ms. Delma Bellamy to help individuals who may need assistance with utilities and rents. So, there's a lot of resources out there, and I can say that I came through as a WIWA participant when the VC summer shutdown was. I came through, and I know that I'm just a living testimony of it, and I would advocate it, and I encourage anyone that if you know of any individual that would need any type of services, career planning, and things of that nature, to come visit WIWA.
And it is good to have someone that actually, like you say, have a testimony that has actually gone through the program. Now, you're turning back around and helping someone else through the program, and I'm also a witness because you helped my grandson with this program. So, I can attest to that. That's an added blessing to us anytime.
Yes, ma'am.
That you have somebody that's hands-on and we're familiar with. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question for the county administrator. Would this be a valuable option for like the Promise Program?
It could. It is something I think we may need to explore because we do have, it kind of goes back to the old saying, why reinvent the wheel if you already have a process in place that works? And why duplicate services if you already have an existing system in place? So, it is something that we have started looking at and exploring to see if it is an option that we could piggyback off of this program to administer the Promise Program. I can't say that we have fully vetted it yet to see, but I think it is incumbent upon us to at least look at it and either say, make a recommendation to council or rule it out one way or the other. Because again, it's an existing system that does a very similar thing to what the Promise Program's looking to do.
Does council have any further questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Next item, the personnel changes that were alluded to a moment ago. Do want to announce those. We've had some internal changes. These are all familiar faces. They're just in different roles for a little while. We are having this Laura Johnson. I think everyone knows Laura. She's been our comp controller for many years. She will be stepping up to act as the interim deputy administrator for the next six months. We will have her in that role assisting me. And stepping up behind her, the interim comp controller will be Ann Bass, who has, again, served in that department for a number of years and is quite capable of stepping up and filling that role. Also, we're going to make a change in HR. Brandon St. Brad Calder, who is currently in our public works, will be moving over to serve as our HR director. So, I want to let council know of those changes. The only other item I have is, didn't have it on the agenda, but did want to mention that the county has been awarded the Golden Palmetto Award, and we will receive that at the upcoming county meeting, and that is recognition of our assistance of the Disabilities and Special Board, Special Needs Board. We assist them with a number of things through the years. They have nominated us. They took it upon themselves to nominate us for this award, and we have received it.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Ms. Bell.
Mr. Taylor, you know, you and I have talked about this already around the announcement of the personnel changes. One of the things, you know, I would like to always make sure we do is to not, I'm not talking about the interim appointments, but anytime, because Mr. Brad Calder is going to the HR director role, and it looked like to me we would have made that role, we advertised for the role, and then selected from that, from the interviewees, since that's a major role. So, again, would like for us to consider doing those things. I don't question how you going about doing that, and I'm sure you looked at it in detail. So, I'm not here to too much criticize you on that. I'm just saying, there's a preference for me is that we do advertisement of roles, especially new roles, because I'm thinking Mr. Calder is not an interim position, correct?
Right. He is permanent.
And so, just going forward, I wish we can advertise the roles. Thanks.
Mr. Taylor, I know that the council does not have anything to do with the day-to-day role, but what I would like to see is that when something is done, that maybe the council would be notified, you know, of these changes. It's kind of embarrassing when you hear it from the public before we know it, you know? We get a call about different things that's going on in the county, and we don't know anything about it, and then, you know, a little while later, we get a notification of it, you know? If there's any way possible when, you know, things, changes are made, that council would be notified, and, you know, like I say, it's embarrassing when someone asks you about stuff. Why don't you know you're on the county council? So, if we can work on that, I would surely appreciate it. And also, you know, just to kind of pick it back off of what Mr. Bells was saying is that, you know, I think sometimes positions, we always want to look at the people that's in-house, but then, I also think that sometimes we need to advertise outside. We can sometimes get stuck in that same old, same old mode. And sometimes, if we look outside, we can get new ideas. People can come up with things that, you know, sometimes we don't think about. So, just a thought, food for thought.
Councilman Paul.
Mr. Taylor, isn't there an in-house policy that you can make movements in-house without having to post a job?
Yes, we try, we moved forward this very carefully. We did consult with our attorney, Linda Edwards, who handles, has been handling our HR for many, many years to make sure we were doing this appropriately. And I don't deny, I do think advertising and putting it out is always preferred, but in this given situation, after consulting with our attorney, we decided to move Mr. Calder from in-house from his existing position to this new position of HR.
Not just talking about one position. I was just talking about all.
I understand, sir.
Mr. Taylor, Brad, Mr. Calder, hadn't he done human resources before?
He has, yes.
Ms. Bell.
Again, I don't want anyone to come here and leave here and think I'm not talking about Mr. Calder, certification, his ability to do the role. That's not the conversation here. I know Mr. Calder. As a matter of fact, I like him very much, okay? I've had opportunities to talk to him and all that. So, that is not about what I'm talking about. Mr. Brad Calder, I think is a good, is a pretty good guy. What I am talking about is, is to make sure that we advertise for the role. That's a significant role in the county, and I just thought it would have been good if we did that. But again, let me say this again. I do not question how you did that. As a matter of fact, you gave me all the details. You talked to me about the labor attorney and all that, okay? I've gone through all of that. My point is simple is, is can we make sure we have a policy where we, all of these positions are paid by county funds? So, you know, please, no one think that I'm talking about Mr. Calder because again, and I'm sure he's going to do a very good job, there's nothing about him in particular.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
That's all I had.
I think that completes our county administrator's report. There is no clerk's or council's report. Now, down to our second public comment session. Ms. Davis, anyone sign to speak?
Yes, we have three speakers tonight. First, Ms. Jackie Wortman, speaking on visions.
Start the clock.
You can't start the clock because I had to start talking. You must have started over. Over. Thank you. Davis. Good evening, Chairman Robinson and council members. Jackie Wortman, District Four. Over the last five years, the nuclear power plant has paid within the proximity of $165 million to Fairfield County in property tax. My concern for the county that the rural areas, the rural areas are not receiving their fair share of taxes. No infrastructure, no real improvement on water system, no housing development, and definitely no adequate funding for recreation. Please note that my request has never been about personal. Now, I want you all to hear me. Never been about personal attacks on council or any other citizen of this county. However, however, my request for funding for the 8.12 acres in the Duncan's community in disagreement with council member Goins was not personal, Ms. Goins, never personal. I realize that you are the Associate Minister of Mount Mariah Baptist Church. This is what I want to say to the public. And I got my phone. I keep all my texts. I received a text from Mount Mariah Baptist Church to never, to never come back to Mount Mariah Baptist Church because I have been trying to get funding for the 8.12 acres of land, and I support my community. I support injustices. I'm against that. I support justice, rightness, not wrong. A great poet said, and I'm going to leave you with this, Maya Angelou said, and I quote, "If a person show you who they are, you better believe them." Now, I added the better, but you believe them. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on Just Cause.
Okay. Does a lie get halfway around the world before the truth has a chance to get its pants on? Does trust still matter to all of us? Is there a greater good you believe in and want to achieve? And can we respect a person who in their actions and words expresses only disrespect and disdain for his fellow man? Think about what I'm saying because tonight, we have a decision to make. It only takes a little courage to do the right thing. Cowards always do the wrong thing. Unfortunately, there is no pre-qualification to be a council member other than being able to sign your name. No particular political degree from a reputable college or university, no license to prove that you make good decisions, no track record of past success, no nothing. And because of that, we wind up with registered sex offenders, self-serving hypocrites, and a barrel full of bad apples. Council members, are you aware that in the last 12 months, Mr. Trapp has missed a total of nine, including today, we'd make it 10, meetings, and has left these council meetings four times with no explanation? And in the same period of time, he's also missed seven, now make it eight, executive sessions? I'm going to allow that information to sink in for a minute. Mr. Trapp has eluded all these meetings. Nonetheless, he's not forfeited any of his paychecks or his requests for reimbursements. When he is here, we see the charlatan and hear the boogeyman tactics of racism and hatred and vulgar innuendos. He brings bigotry and dysfunction to the county, and he's counterproductive. And at its core, at odds with the majority of council members on every issue. It appears, Mr. Trapp, you are in it for the three things you care most about. I'm sorry he's not here to hear me. Yourself, your opinion, and the easy mo- Yourself, your opinion, and the easy money you collect from the county. You failed your district, the community, and the council.
Yes, sir.
And as a representative who has elected to carry out an oath...
A lot of people call people names.
Yeah, you're going to allow me to talk, because I'm allowed to say this. This is a free country. And as a representative who's elected to carry out your oath and deliver to the people the best efforts, Mr. Trapp needs to be removed from office for just cause. We have an attorney, let him earn his keep, do not be, for us not to be derelict in our duty as elected officers of this council to do so. And to paraphrase a portion of the speech from one of our greatest presidents, "This nation under God shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from the earth." This council is a governing authority. You folks need to act and be accountable to the citizens. Tonight, make that motion, change the laws, the bylaws, vote, do whatever it takes that shows that you hear and know the difference between right and wrong, and for the greater good act, and send a message that this kind of behavior will not be tolerated without consequence. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on planning tool.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, Fairfield, District One. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the council for celebrating youth tonight, not just our youth baseball heroes, but also our youth foreign exchange heroes. Anytime you celebrate youth, makes everybody feel a little bit younger, a little bit more energized, it gives you hope for the future. So thank you for doing that. Keep doing those things for us. Now, I have a suggestion, and in part, I've suggested this before, that will help us move forward with our long-range planning. And that first part of the suggestion is, we need to have a public balance sheet, be available for public view and available for your view. I don't know how you can run a business or any entity without knowing where you stand with assets and liabilities. And we saw some issues with that during the budgetary session. And in that context, we should make our plans fit our budgetary constraints. In other words, everyone in the world agrees, our biggest issue facing us is sewer and water. Jackie mentions it, they don't have that in the rural parts of the county. Well, I live within walking distance of downtown Ridgeway. I don't have it either. I'm not complaining about it, but to move forward, we've got to have it. Everyone agrees that's something we need. So, we talked about the penny tax referendum, and that's coming. But let's ensure that we don't get sidetracked with the monies that we collect. And we need to put a restriction on that cash money, on the balance sheet. In other words, restricted for water and sewer plants. And in addition to that, we've talked about, we have $12 million in unfunded or unplanned fund balance, unrestricted cash. Well, let's take four, five, six million dollars of that cash and put it in an account right away, and restrict that for water and sewer only. By doing that, you can't touch it without going through some rigamarole, and by doing that, you demonstrate to our partners, state and federal, who are funding us, we're serious about this water and sewer. And that will demonstrate to them our seriousness about water and sewer, and make them more eager to help contribute to that pie. Again, you can do that with anything, but its primary purpose right now would be to focus on water and sewer, set some of that $12 million aside, and start building that account, because it's going to take tens of millions of dollars to do it. Thank you.
That concludes segment two.
Now down to our county council time. Would any council member like to be recognized? Council member does.
Someone did a pretty good job on, you know, finding out how many meetings Mr. Trapp missed and when he left early, but what you got to realize, you should have researched why he was missing these meetings. He had surgery, and he's had complications from the surgery, and that's the reason he had to leave early several times. And I imagine tonight is another problem with his surgery. He hasn't missed because he just wanted to miss, he missed because of his health. Mr. Taylor, we talked the last time, last meeting, about moving the incinerator down to the right on the end of the property, and buying some additional acreage to make sure the incinerator could be put down there.
Right.
The place where they planned to put the incinerator is right in front of about six or eight houses, and all of these people have bad health. So my suggestion is, let's go down to the end of the county's property, buy some additional property, and put the incinerator down there, because right across the road is a truck and heavy construction, they wouldn't give a rip. So, and then right in front of it is nobody. So that'd be a good place to put it.
Thank you. Any other council member like to be recognized? Council member Bell.
I have several things. On March 6th, 2019, I met with representatives from South Carolina DOT, the citizen of the area, and also invited Mr. Taylor and Mr. Anderson concerning the Fairfield Bridge. We met at the town hall in Ridgeway. The Fairfield Bridge had been down since October 2015, and the start date for repair at that time was 2022, 2023. The community was forgotten without saying the words, but in action had told them, "We don't care." Afterwards, I sent letters and emails and phone calls concerning this project. The representative for this project was always courtesy, courteous, but there's much to this story that is not good, but there are many things that were, that were good. A community that spoke up and said, "I'm tired of being forgotten," community advocates that realized the injustice, and a representative in Annie McDaniel, who assisted us at the state level, and a TV network who highlighted the issue for us. Thanks to all. With that, let me read this letter. Councilman Bell, as discussed over the phone and provided this email, requested with a brief project update. The project schedule has been extremely expedited in order to replace the bridge as quickly as possible, get the roadway back to open traffic. To make this sort of short, let me just read this little piece. The design phase began earlier this month and is scheduled to be completed around the end of the year. Construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in early 2020, and is anticipated to be finished by the end of the year. The next thing, so that was really good, so want to thank everyone. One of the things, when I did get the news, I called Mr. Taylor, because I'm, and just so really glad about the news. But then, this other thing, The Voice, July 11th, 2019, this article was concerning the promise program. So let me read, I'm part of the article. An agenda for the meeting states, the executive session for, the executive session was for a contractual matter, to discuss and receive legal advice regarding an agreement between Fairfield County, Fairfield County School District and Midland Technical College as to the promise program. Paul said he didn't agree with discussing the promise program behind closed doors. I thought that matter pertaining to the promise program could have been done in an open forum, he said. I didn't see a need for it to be an executive session. Monday night, executive session was improper because the county had already signed a memorandum of understanding, said Jay Bender, an attorney with the South Carolina Press Association, of which The Voice is a member. Bender also called the receipt of legal advice explanation vaguely worded. The memorandum of understanding sounds like a contract to me, Bender said. If there's an MOU, which is a contract, you can't go into executive session on the rubic of contractual matters. So let me continue. The county signed a memorandum of understanding for the Mount Zion project on 2/118. According to Bender, after the contract or the MOU was signed, as reported by The Voice, could no longer go into executive session. However, the previous council went into executive session five times after the MOU was signed. The dates are 8/13/18, 8/27/18, 9/10/18, 9/24/18, and 10/18/18, without a comment from those persons mentioning The Voice, who now say that this council cannot go into executive session. What is the difference? A MOU is the same then as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Vice Chair Goins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to say thank you to all the presentations that were made tonight, especially on the WIO program, and our visitors. Thank you so much for your presentation, for your being here in Fairfield County. Just a comment on the infrastructure for the western side, that is not a new thing that has been going on for years, for ages. The only way that we're going to be inclusive from the western side as far as infrastructure, water, and sewer, the only way is that the community is going to have to stand up, come to the meeting of Jenkinsville Water Company, and change the board, which will change the structure, which will cause us to be inclusive, and allow that area to grow the way it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Goins. Any other council member like to be recognized? I just wanted to piggyback on what you said about Mr. Trapp, you know, he has reached out and stated that he was sick, he did have surgery. You know, us as council members up there, you know, citizens have to remember that we do have feelings as well, so maybe you need to, I would suggest you reach out to him, because one thing that shouldn't be allowed, or we all should be respectful of each other's feelings, we are human as well, so. I know it may be held to a higher standard, but at the same time, we do get ill, we do get sick, so I'll just leave it at that. If no other council member has anything, we're going to make next executive session our entertainment motion.
So moved. Do we need to say what it's for?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Mr. Bell. It'll be item A, economic development discussion regarding an economic development project located in Fairfield County, and execution of documents in relation thereof. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Ms. Chair.
It's been moved in properly, second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Let's approve 6-0 with non-executive session at 7:50.